We're going to put that right on camera. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. It is now two oh one. And we are going to begin the Thursday, May thirtieth workshop. Agenda, we, everyone has a copy of the agenda. We'll work through it. Just a note, in our process of trying to get all of our meetings kind of in order and having the agenda review, this is still kind of the bumpy part of it where we're trying to have workshops and briefings and all of that so that we can be a little more conscious of our way of work. So this one is supposed to be from two until four, I believe, but we're going to attempt to get through everything as quickly as possible. If we can keep our comments to not more than one to two minutes each, then we can get through this. There were some arrangements that some members had prior to this and we want to be aware of that and keep aware of their time. So let us, we're going to start out and in future, our plan is to do the agenda review piece at the beginning of our workshop. Where's staff out there? Wave at us. Okay, thank you. We're thinking of you. So we want to get you in and get you out. And hopefully, as this gets a lot smoother, then you will know ahead of time what questions we have for you and you will either have given us the answers or come prepared with those answers. This, we'll just go through and it's been going pretty well, I think, going through the agenda review. Everybody has their questions done. But in future, you'll be in the beginning and then you can leave as you need to. Or you can stay and have fun with us. So first of all, let's go with our agenda review. Everybody has that pulled up. And first thing on the agenda is the student progression plan. And do we have any questions or is there any additional information that we need to have for that? Anyone have questions, comments? Yes, ma'am.
I had a list of them. Actually, I didn't realize I was going to be limited to one minute, but.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, we want everyone to get their comments and questions out, but we just want to, you know, try to make it equitable to everyone.
All right, so page nine of the student progression plan, where it says, "Assignment of students with disabilities to exceptional education courses with instruction in the access points." And it goes on from there. I'm not going to read the whole thing out loud. I just was wondering, how does this translate in the classroom? Like, what, what does this look like in the classroom?
And do we have?
Yeah, we do have staff here, so.
If you would like to. You can go to two different ones if you like, so you can both talk or this one in the middle is the best. Okay, so we're on page nine, one point six. In which section?
Page nine of the student progression plan. All I have written is the quote, "Assignment of students with disabilities to exceptional education courses." It should be highlighted.
Should be like one, one point seven?
One point four.
That's not on page nine. Okay.
Page nine, one point four. Yeah.
One is a different one. Maybe I'm on the wrong document. Okay, Lori, go ahead.
It's seven on the printed, but it's nine on the, when it loads.
I'm on the page number.
On the workshop.
Okay.
Our students with disabilities that have their course instruction delivered via access points have modified curriculum. Sorry, sorry. I had a. Our students that are receiving their instruction via access points have modified curriculum and they're assigned to courses where those modifications are made. Does that answer your question? They receive their instruction via access points, so they have their modifications and supports delivered to them and that's as, as determined by their, their IEP plan.
So I think I'm confused and I shouldn't have asked the question because I was confusing this with students who have, who require BI, behavioral intervention. That's different from students who would be educated here through, yes?
I'm going to let Jessica Duncan discuss how the students are actually scheduled based on their needs in that regard.
So when you're asking about BI versus alternate assessment, alternate assessment is the way the student is assessed. So an IEP team will look at a number of factors for a student. One of the beginning factors that they look at is an IQ score of sixty-nine or below and then they look at other factors. And the team will make a decision of whether that student will be on the state, standard state assessment or alternate assessment. So that's the alternate assessment piece for BI. That's a service delivery system we use in Lee County, so that's part of placement. So in that case, an IEP team would look at if a student needs a separate class. And if a student needs a separate class, that's one option for a separate class placement. And a student in that program could be on standard assessment or could be alternately assessed depending on then some additional needs.
So when, when and how do we determine whether a student in a BI setting is being successful there? Whether the behavior in that classroom is negatively impacting the other students in the class or in the school? And how to get that student the services he or she needs above and beyond the BI classroom? Does that make sense?
So that is part of the role of the team. So every BI classroom ha, every BI program also has a behavior specialist assigned to that program. So that's one of the additional supports there. Then they have the teacher and then a pair for the classroom. So if there's a student there and part of the reason there, there is for behavioral needs. So there is an expectation, like when new students come in, that there might be a change in behavior. But if there is a continued need for another program or additional supports, then the team would get together to determine what does, what do those additional supports look like? Is that additional adult support in that program? Or is that a more supported program, like an II, an intensive intervention program, which has a lower student ratio? Or is that a program like Rural Palm, which would be our center school for behavior?
All right, thank you.
Do you have others on there?
I do.
I have one on, but it's one point nine. Shall we just work our way down?
I'm still on one point four.
Okay, go ahead.
So the last bullet point there on one point four talks about, maybe it's not the last bullet point, "Assignment of students with gifted exceptionalities to general or exceptional education courses," going on from there. How are those students identified?
So through gifted, there is a screening process at the school. And if through the screening process they're identified for evaluation, then they would go through an evaluation process to see if they qualify for gifted services. And then there's a threshold to see if they qualify for part-time versus full-time gifted services. Are you asking a specific level?
Well, I'm just, there's change to the language here and I'm familiar with how we did it before. I'm wondering how this language changes our existing process.
Okay, what specific? So it just added the gifted exceptionality there. So gifted is technically in the ESE department and it falls under our umbrella, but it's not a disability category. So previously where it said disabilities, it's just now outlining or gifted that that's not technically a disability area, even though they're served in, that department is located in ESE.
So it's not a substantive change? It's not going to change the way we do business or anything? Okay, that was all I was getting at, all I was trying to figure out.
Okay.
That's it for me in that section.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
As far as the gifted is concerned, well, I guess both. As far as gifted, how? Is it the teachers that decide that the child is gifted? Or is it the parent who decides to have the child tested? What, what do you, what's the norm for that? And what's the number that makes that child gifted on their test?
It could happen either way. A parent could ask for their child to be tested for gifted or a teacher could identify that they have a student in their classroom that performs at a very high level or has some quality that seems that to maybe set them apart from other students in the classroom. I'd have to get you the specific numbers for, do you want part-time and full-time?
Yes, I would love that. And, and when would they? I believe that the test should be done in the beginning of the year versus the end of the year, which I see, I hear that's happening a lot.
So the testing piece is through psychological services and that component may just be, you know, when you get a new student in your classroom, it might be a teacher who identifies, maybe a teacher from last year, didn't identify a student as having, but maybe they have a new teacher, so then they start and go through that process. So I don't know that they would necessarily identify every student at the beginning of the year. And I, I don't want to speak for psychological services because they would have a lot more information than I would, but I do know that they're doing testing and ongoing testing all through the year and also throughout the summer in order to accommodate the high level of evaluations needed in that area.
And then that just goes into their file for the next year?
Mm-hmm.
Or it should?
Mm-hmm.
That kind of brings up an interesting question, though, about who recognizes whether this child should be tested? Because if we have students that are, their parents are very involved or whatever, then that may happen quicker. And other than that, you will have students that education is not the prominent thing in their household. The teacher doesn't recommend them. This child can go through years and years and not be recognized. And, and I've seen where they have been even labeled as a, as a, you know, a problem, behavioral problem when they're just bored. So how, how do we address that Wednesday child that, you know?
So we could, I could maybe have somebody from GiftedCon that could speak more in-depth to those processes. I know they're looking at potentially a new process for next year to identify exactly like you were looking at a, a broader range of student, because exactly like you said, a student, students may be identified who are more proficient at class tasks and homework rather than necessarily on their gifted characteristics. So I believe they were moving, again, this is a committee that's been working, so I've got some information peripherally, but I believe they were moving towards a different measurement for students.
Okay, and, and that answers, and we can talk about that later on, too. Yes.
Different schools have different levels of services for the gifted students. And that's, that's the only thing that I see as, as an issue. And I'm hoping it's not for our discussion today. But I'm hoping that moving forward, we can have more equity among the schools and that we can also have, for instance, I know, you know, many of the gifted students wind up and they don't have to be gifted to be in a pre-AP or pre-IB or one of those, but many, many of them are. And I know that's an inequity among our schools also that. So when Ms. Jordan asked about end, end of the year, summer, this is really something that parents should know actually before school choice. Because that would be to me, if I had a gifted child and, you know, I would, I would want my child to be in a school that offered full services rather than part-time or pull-out services or, you know, there, there are a lot of different scenarios out there among our schools. But that's a discussion, that whole thing, maybe in a later day, but I see Ms., Dr. Creeson Berry has an answer, apparently.
Well, some of it goes back again to the evaluation component. So I'll take, you know, some of the things that you've addressed today that I know that are things that they've been working on and I, I know that are important points for students to make sure that they're in the right spot, getting the right services and supports and enrichment they need and, you know, from the ESE side, not just remediation, but also making sure our students who are getting the material have what they need to take it further. So I will share those and then I will also share, follow up with Dr. Atkins just related to the gifted thresholds and also any possible changes or updates to the process to consider students and then also what timeline they're looking for students now. And I'll share that with Dr. Atkins.
And just, just to add something, are the, a question, are the schools, and I'm thinking of elementary schools right now, I don't, I don't know, are they, is it listed on our website? Which are the, you know, the way we have magnet schools, whether.
It's listed on the student enrollment, student.
Oh, okay, so.
Student enrollment, I guess. What schools have part-time gifted and what schools have full-time gifted.
Oh, okay, that's great. I'm happy to hear that.
I was just gonna, one of the things that Teresa talked about was the gifted committee that we have had this, this school year and it consists of parents, teachers and the gifted department. And one of the changes that we have already made is that the compliance piece, the testing and ensuring that the plans are in place and up to date will remain in the ESE department, but we have moved the curriculum side of the gifted department to curriculum to ensure that the gifted teachers and what you, what you were referring to with equity among all of the schools and all of the gifted programs, that will start this summer, the work to move forward to ensure that that's happening.
Thank you.
Can I just say one quick, please? And this is for the children with IEPs. Can we please also make sure that if those children are being tested, that the parents are made aware of that? So they have the information.
You mean if they're being tested for gifted?
If they're being tested for gifted or if they're being tested for.
They are, they are.
Or being, or spoken to about their IEPs. And then they're given these, the STAR test or whatever test they deem to give them, which is going to give them scores of one or two and then not, and possibly not being able to be promoted or not given that, that ninety minutes extra reading that's required by law, statute one zero zero eight point three two. But we just need to make sure that we are giving those kids every opportunity to achieve their goals.
So for the students to be tested for gifted, it requires parent permission before it goes any further. So as soon as a teacher recommends the child be, go forward for gifted, the parent has to sign a permission slip for that.
Perfect, thank you.
Did you have, excuse me, other question? That's okay. Why don't you go ahead. Does anyone else have any other questions regarding this? Because we've got about ten minutes to finish up on this issue. And after your next question, I would like to ask Lori, please come up and make sure that we've hit the high spots of anything that you really want us to make sure we're aware of. Uh, but go ahead, Ms. Patrika.
All right, well, there were two things in here, you know, sort of in the spirit of things that make you go, hmm. One of them was the fact that recess is required in all but our charter schools. I have to assume that that was, that's state language, right?
Yes.
I can't fathom why elementary school students in traditional public schools would need recess, but charter school students would not. That just doesn't make any sense to me. And the other one that sort of made me go, hmm, hmm, was on page one eleven, talking about civics. So I know that there's a lot of misinformation out there. We don't teach civics, when in fact we do. So it seems to me like the state just sort of added a description to civics rather than explain to the state and to their constituents that we already teach civics, which I thought was really odd. And the last thing here is on page twenty for career planning. So this appears to require an internet-based system where students are tested to determine what their future career might be based on whatever the, the online test asks. Now, I know that there are a lot of really bad assessments out there. I think this is a fantastic opportunity for our kids. And so I'd like to make sure that we use something really quality, really high quality for our kids here to make sure that it's truly assessing their strengths and their desires so that they can be paired up with an appropriate career and follow the, the appropriate classwork necessary to get them there. I don't want it to be just, you know, like a Seventeen Magazine quiz kind of thing. You know what I mean? Am I making sense?
And before you answer that, kind of piggybacking on that, are you looking at purchasing that type of a program or creating it in-house or how will we do that?
So this language was recently passed in statute in 2017. Statute was updated to remove the career planning requirement for middle school students and they, they have placed it back into statute with very similar requirements. And we took that piece of statute and embedded it verbatim into the student progression plan. In this particular case, there is a tool that the Florida Department of Education had developed and we were using that and they have continued to make it more and more robust and it's called My Career Shines. It's a highly interactive career discovery tool. The students have an interest and skills survey and assessment. It then highlights careers of interest that match their interests and skills in various clusters. And then they can also research those careers on a deeper level. And the tool is very intuitive. So students develop a username and password, they log in and the teachers can walk them through the initial engagement and the students can continue to dive into those tools on a deeper and deeper level. And there are lesson plans that are developed along with that from the Department of Education that will supplement this course. And it was actually intended for when this course was in legislation as the tool of choice.
Great, awesome. My really final, final comment is page one forty-six. I love, love, love the additions to career and technical education there. I think that's fantastic.
Yes, ma'am.
On the same as, of course, nineteen, career planning. Does that also include the students of DJJ?
All middle grade students are to be enrolled in this course.
So they would have an actual computer there for them to, to use for this purpose?
Because it's required, I'm going to go out on a limb and say yes, because we should. We do have a brief briefing for you with the other high points later in today's presentation. And you've hit a lot of them, Ms. Patrika, so thank you. But we have a few more to cover with you in a little bit.
Okay, thank you very much. We have recouped a few moments. Let's move on to the next agenda item. Switch from the page. Operations.
Good afternoon, board, Chair. I wanted to, I know this is the first time I've actually been up in front of all of you in any detail perspective, but I want to give you an update on what's going on with my role, with operations and some of the things that I am uncovering and some of the things that I'm working on in order to continue to move the operations team, I, I would say, in more of a forward progressive manner. The, you know, I've been studying the operations team and spending time with them in a hands-on way and their process. The one thing that I will tell you right up front is the people are the best asset here. I mean, we've got some really good people, we've got some good leaders. But there is opportunity to, you know, have some more intra-dependability on each other and some more intra-working. So I'm working on some concepts around that. And the good news is the other, the other staff reporting to Dr. Atkins are very willing to help out here and we're seeing some progress as a result. With this term, I'm sure you're all familiar with matrix management, where you don't have to have the person reporting to you to have the best work done and perform. And so we're working as a team to try to get more of that to be a, a norm, if you will, within a district from an operations point of view. There's sure a lot of moving parts and so it's helpful to do that. We can save money. We have several examples that we've entered into, whether it's the fleet management program that we're working on together or whether it's, you know, project management as a role itself. We're using people from the maintenance department to do project management roles in the planning department. And so, you know, we don't have to go up a silo and back down. And so it's just, I know they sound simple, but getting them all to, to feel comfortable with that is, has been part of my, my mission. The other main mission is to obviously hire the right executives to be here to help us in the long run with planning, operations management, senior executives in transportation and things like that. And this morning, I spent three hours with another candidate for the planning department that was an outstanding candidate to add to one that we already have come to somewhat of a conclusion. We, we interviewed a lady named Angela Sperry from Chicago. She ran her own construction company and she made it to the top of our list. Since that time last week when she was here, we also had an opportunity to meet with a lady from Sarasota District that has done the planning, has been a director there already, would love to be down here in Lee County. So we're really starting to hone in and get some really good people. And I know that we all have a certain patience level for this, but I, I have learned a very important lesson in my thirty-some years in, in business that you really want to hire slowly, methodically, and, and you probably want to release faster, right? So we're following that, that model. And I will tell you that I am hiring these people as if they were going to be working for me long-term. I mean, it's that kind of passion and commitment. That's what we need. And, and so we're starting to see those candidates and they're coming to the surface. We're really close to a couple of these folks being employed. The other thing I've been working on is, is insecurity. And, you know, there's probably nothing more important than being ready for next school year with our SRO leadership in the schools. And so I've been working with Dr. Atkins and with our security people and making sure we have a, a plan for that. We have a Gantt chart of a plan, if you will, a deadline as to here's when school starts. Two weeks prior, we have some work that we're going to do similar to what Dr. Atkins did last year. It's get the people together on both sides and make sure everybody's committed to this. We have some examples, schools like Cape Carl, I think, that's got a budget and a plan and they're ready to go and we're trying to make sure that's the norm for the rest of the, the school systems. I've been participating in, you know, some of the process, the reporting, the inspection of our, of our business units. And I have an overall theme where I'd like to see them to be more progressive and more technology infused. So I'm working with Trey and his team in our IT organizations to see if we've got the latest technology, whether that's GPS or whether it's RFID.
or whether it's, you know, uh, project management as a role itself. We're using people from the maintenance department to do project management roles in the planning department. And so, you know, we don't have to go up a, a silo and back down. And so it's just, I know they sound simple, but getting them all to, to feel comfortable, that is, uh, has been part of my, my mission. The other main mission is to obviously hire the right executives to be here to help us in the long run with planning, operations management, uh, you know, senior executives in transportation and things like that. And this morning, I spent three hours with another, uh, candidate for the planning department. That was an outstanding candidate to add to, uh, one that we already have come to somewhat of a conclusion. We, we interviewed, uh, a lady named Angela Sperry from Chicago. She ran her own construction company, and she made it to the top of our list. Since that, uh, time last week when she was here, we also had an opportunity to meet with, uh, a lady from Sarasota District that has done the planning, has been a director there already, would love to be down here in Lee County. So we're really starting to hone in and get some really good people. And I know that we all have a certain patience level for this, but I, I have learned a very important lesson in my thirty-some years in, in business that you really want to hire slowly, methodically, and, and you probably would release faster, right? So we're following that, that model. And I will tell you that I am hiring these people as if they were going to be working for me long-term. I mean, it's that kind of passion and commitment. That's what we need. And, uh, and so we're starting to see those candidates, and they're coming to the surface. We're really close to a couple of these, uh, folks being, uh, employed. The other thing I've been working on is, is, uh, insecurity. And, you know, there's probably nothing more important than being ready for next school year with our SRO, uh, leadership in the schools. And so I've been working with Dr. Atkins and with our security people and making sure we have a, a plan for that. We have a, a Gantt chart of a plan, if you will, a deadline as to here's when school starts. Two weeks prior, we have some work that we're going to do, uh, similar to what Dr. Atkins did last year. It's get the people together on both sides and make sure everybody's committed to this. We have some examples, schools like Cape Carl, I think, that's got a budget and a plan, and they're ready to go. And we're trying to make sure that's the norm for the rest of the, the school systems. I've been participating in, um, you know, some of the, um, process, the reporting, the inspection, um, of our, of our business units. And, um, I have an overall theme where I'd like to see them to be more progressive and more technology-infused. So I'm working with Trey and his team in our IT organizations to see if we've got the latest technology, whether that's GPS or whether it's RFID, doesn't matter what it is, are we using it and are we, um, best agreed, you know, in, in the district here? And also, um, um, just participating, getting down in, into the different levels of the leadership and management team to really understand what are some of their challenges? What are some of the things that we need to stop doing? What are some of the things we need to start doing? And what are the things that they're happy with continuing to do? I know that sounds elementary, but quite frankly, if you can answer those three questions, usually have a pretty good handle on, on how are things going in the, in the organization? And, you know, considering, uh, going forward with, um, a little more efficiencies, maybe a little less layers, uh, and, and the reporting maybe to be consolidated somewhat in, in operations. And I'm getting a lot of great ideas from the team. I'm getting a lot of feedback, both inside operations and, and the group at large. And I have many visits that I have, um, had with the different groups, and I have those continuing, uh, on into the next, next several weeks. So, um, I just wanted to give you that overview and tell you that hopefully we're making progress. I mean, the team is all committed, um, and there's, uh, there's more to it than what you think sometimes, you know, there's quite a bit. Do you have any questions?
Yes. Yes, hi. I, I know you've been working on revising our organizational chart. And I have a couple of questions. The first one is, do you have, um, deadline date or, or kind of a time marker for us on when you'll have your preliminaries on? Um, I know you're talking about operations right now, either that or the chart as a whole.
Yes, in fact, I have, you know, I've kind of been playing a, a little bit of a joint role, you know, trying to fill in, um, you know, kind of as an interim somewhat, because there's a few executives missing, as you know, in the organization. But my shoulders are wide and I'm able to, to do that. Uh, at the same time, I've shared with Dr. Atkins and the team that I have a functional chart, uh, which I think, uh, describes what we need as a, as a, as an organization and as a group. And it has no names in it, but it's here's what you need to get the business done. I think we may have talked about that the last time I was here. And then, once we have that, um, organized, integrated, and, and we have it on paper, it's then coming back and filling in with the best athletes that we can possibly find. And that's looking inside and outside at the same time. So yes, and so the timeframe that we should have that back is in the next thirty days.
Thirty days, okay. And right now, we call the, I guess, the top executive layer, the chiefs.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, once upon a time when the district was a little bit smaller, I mean, we've had various names. I think one time it was assistant or associate superintendent and this sort of thing. Do you see changes, whether it's, whether they're called chiefs? Or do you see that basic framework on, on the top level? And that, with, with that, do you see, I know some departments are larger than others. Um, I'm looking whether you have found superfluous positions and, uh, things that need to be, if you can give us a hint, things that need to be added or things that might need to be omitted based on what you've seen.
Well, I think from a title perspective, what I have done is tried to compare ourselves to districts that are at or larger than us. And, um, and this is, you know, like somebody said the other day, it's a billion and a half business. So if you look at it from that perspective, it's quite large and complex. And I'm used to the terminology of, you know, the COO versus the chief information, you know, things like that, business side. And I think that's where at least I'm tending to land. And some of the districts that look like us and feel like us, uh, the, the biggest requirement is so that each organization, especially operations, has a seat at the table. And so at the cabinet, to make sure that we're interacting and we're doing those things. I don't think we've, we've settled on exactly titles and things like that. But I can assure you underneath of that, once we have a seat at the table, we're looking at the layers that it takes to perform the work. We're looking at the integration it takes to perform the work, and we're looking at the, uh, the efficiencies of that.
Right, and, and, yeah, some, some of the terminologies, and especially when, uh, we have a lot of changing terminologies, it begins to get confusing, I, I think, not just to the public, but I know speaking for myself, um, just kind of looking at the chart gets.
Well, I, I, I hear you, and, and Dr. Atkins has asked me the same thing. I will get you a functional chart, uh, straight away. The one that's a little more complex is because there's some moving parts to some names and things like that.
Yeah, not expecting the names, just the positions. And, and that way, once we have the positions, we'll know, is this a position where we can attach a name? Or is it a position that we need to fill? So, thank you.
He, he has discussed with me, uh, a little bit more specifically in terms of, um, some streamlining of the executive piece and also some of the support components as well. Um, and I think that, you know, moving forward, it, it, it will work to make us a more efficient organization with, with less layers. And, um, you know, the ability to get the work done more directly without, you know, having to go through so much of a chain.
Any other comments on that? The one thing that I have to say, I haven't come from corporate many days, I sat through the start, stop, continue discussion. And it really does work to kind of focus. Um, if no other comments, then thank you. And if I were in my classroom now at East Lee County High School with my, uh, seniors, I would have to say my bad, because I have, and, and you did point this out. I should have gone on through the agenda, and I kind of skipped over that. So let us go back if everyone, everyone can pull up the agenda just to make sure we've covered any questions in that. And then we'll get back to the rest of the agenda. At three fifteen, we have a call-in, so we need to move on. And let's start with academic services. Are there any questions regarding anything under the academic services agenda?
I've got to pull up that agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry. Anything you need us specifically to know, Dr. Atkins?
Not in that, not in that portion, no, thank you.
I, I, that's really the only area where I had questions, was academic services.
Don't apologize, you can have questions, it's all right. Um, so go ahead. And who is representing?
Probably Dr. McCullers.
Okay.
Dr. McCullers, did you receive my questions?
I did.
Excellent.
I just finished working on them four or five minutes ago, so.
You know what? That's why I wasn't out of source. I was giving Dr. McCullers time to finish. Was that smooth?
If you wouldn't mind. The questions are posted inside the agenda.
Correct.
You have them?
I have them. You want me to read them?
Uh, if, if you like.
Uh, on items, uh, E one through five and eight. Number one, uh, we only retain five percent of funds on the first two hundred and fifty students. I guess it was just a.
So what's the population? The current population is, is, um, about ten thousand eight hundred. So that's, that fluctuates, that's probably eleven or twelve percent of our students from our schools, and twenty-four charter schools.
Did you say ten to eleven percent?
Eleven percent of the student population.
Because we used to be around thirteen, right?
Yeah, it's, it might be thirteen on a given day, but.
Okay.
It's usually not. Um, we have, uh, the que, next question is, um, how many over two fifty? Um, of the twenty-four that we have, we have fourteen schools that are over two hundred and fifty.
Okay.
So, and some are quite a bit over that. Um, but we have some very small schools as well. The next detailed question was, of those schools, um, or do those schools rely on district services for things like mental health, training of teachers, and training of administrators? And, um, in a few limited cases, um, teachers and principals do attend training that's federally funded. Um, this charter school staff will attend training on a service that we're required to provide as well. So like if we have training for bookkeepers or school counselors, then charter school staff participate in it as well. The great majority in general, uh, charter schools are responsible for training their own employees.
Okay.
The other services that we provide to charter schools, we're required to provide contract management services, the actual charters themselves. And that includes the services of the superintendent, the board, the school board attorney, and the charter school liaison, all the people involved in authorizing. We're required to provide, um, uh, FTE and data reporting services. We're required to provide ESC administration services. We're required to provide any services related to eligibility and reporting for charter schools in their own national school lunch program, if they choose to do that.
ESC administration services, what, what is that?
Well, nobody knows. That's not well-defined, but that's what it says in the statute. So, so we do our best with it. Um, it's, there's, there's, um, we do, we do eligibility testing. We do, um, uh, we have the, um, district representatives involved in IEPs. We, we do, you know, whatever is necessary under IDEA, um, and we work it out school by school. But the, the term itself, administration services, are fully not defined.
Okay.
We do test administration for their state tests. We, they had, they're required to provide their own, um, computer hardware when that's necessary for paper tests, obviously, we provide it and, and, uh, we're, and collect them. We do anything related to teacher certification data, like we report their, uh, we, we submit their credentials for certification and recertification, and provide information services like access to our student information. We also provide instructional staff and administrators with district email accounts to make some of these operations a lot easier. Other services like inter-office mail or school bus inspections, those are not required, and those are done through separate contracts, school by school, year by year.
Okay, but like, um, a charter school is, does a charter school, maybe Laurie Brooks should answer this. Does a charter school have to meet the requirements of the new mental health law? Yes or no?
Yes, under their own plans that they submit to their governing boards, and they are approved, and then submitted to the, the Department of Education.
Okay, all right. So then the big question is, does our five percent, the five percent we retain on the first two hundred and fifty students, does that cover the costs of the manpower that we put into the administration of charter schools?
No. Um, we, we let, we did a study of this. There was a single statewide study done in twenty twelve where we actually, um, enumerated all of the services we provide, mostly hours of staff time. And we reported that we spent about twice as much as we were actually collecting administrative fees. So, state never asking for that information again, so we have not, we have not done a study of this.
One of the things that, moving forward, that I think is a, a bit of a, um, concern is if you look at some of the requirements of the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Act and our requirements to have a safe officer in all of those buildings. You know, that safe categorical portion, we typically, it's driven by the student enrollment in, in the charter school. And, uh, the, and you could probably speak to this a little bit more, or with a little bit more articulation, but, um, small schools are more expensive to operate. And so when you look at the scale of some of these smaller schools and equip them with a full-time, um, you know, school resource officer, that is, um, gets to be an expensive proposition when you start to break it down per student. So, um, you know, we had a situation this year, in fact, at Harlem Heights where it didn't cover. They had, um, you know, went one direction. We, uh, to, in order to get in compliance, we worked with our, um, with Captain Miller, and we were able to get an officer assigned there, but that's a, you know, relatively small population. Uh, so moving forward, you know, that's just an example of one of the many challenges. Uh, because we as a district, uh, you know, we have small schools too, and we know they're expensive to operate. And, and, um, you know, we take, we take that on. But, um, you know, when you have multiple small sites, it gets to be a pretty expensive, um, consideration when you have requirements like we have in that piece of legislation.
So for, on the safety thing, do, do they get a portion of our safe schools' dollars? Okay, and is that proportionate?
It's, it's proportionate to their, to the size of their school, their student enrollment. The, uh, the difficulty though is that in many cases, that allocation for safe school dollars, for example, is not enough to pay for a school resource officer. So, um, you know, at some point, we have to work out what that difference is going to be.
Okay. Because of our time factor, let me ensure up to one second, and since all of, um, are you able to post the answers to?
I have a written response, if you'd like me to submit that instead.
Um, for, for the sake of time, Ms. Patrico, would you mind if we do that? And if you have.
Well, there's just one that I need an answer to.
No, that's.
Which is the next one.
Okay.
Do we have to do a fifteen-year renewal?
Uh, no, uh, that's negotiable. Um, the, the, in the early days of, right? Uh, when we only had a handful of schools, we would do a five-year initial charter, renew for five years, and never consider anything else. But at that time, we had a separate, um, director and a separate secretary responsible for charter school operations when we only had a handful of schools. We now, we eliminated those positions during, you know, the budget calamities, and now we have twenty-four schools. And if we are renewing one-fifth of our schools every year, that's a huge amount of workload. Changes in statute mean that we now do the new charter school applications in February and the renewals in March. And so it is a crazy busy time for all the, the staff involved in the reviews of both those sets of operations and the school board attorney. So, as a matter of practicality, we considered longer terms. And when you look at it, there's nothing lost by giving a longer term. You still have all of the safety provisions in the charter. You can always close a charter school anytime for cause. None of that goes away, so there's nothing lost. The charter school has a benefit in that they can get better terms in financing, better lines of credit, better vendor contracts, and not have to worry about submitting a renewal every five years. So it's kind of a win-win, and it's been our practice now for several years. That if you're in good standing, which you would be if you're doing a renewal, we go ahead and, and we'll recommend the longer term if the school requests it. Sometimes they don't. But when they do request it, we, we recommend it.
So there's no benefit to our students then, doing a shorter term? There's no additional oversight for it coming before us every five years?
There's nothing gained.
All right, and, and the, the last thing I do have to say publicly is that I do have some concerns about, um, the renaming of Unity Charter. And did you get the feeling that that was in order to avoid any negative association with the former name because they closed overnight?
See, that's, that's exactly why they want to change. The school has, um, had a, had a hard year. And in the, in the course of that year, um, in consultation with us, they have fired their management company. They have fired their accounting firm, and they have hired, uh, new services. And the, the new company, um, and then reorganizing their board as well. So they get new leadership to supervise those contracts. So it is, um, it's their request to change the name to get a fresh start for the school. We have done that at least fifteen times in similar circumstances. When there's a change in management, when the school, you know, has had a, you know, rough time with grades or a rough time with, uh, enrollment, and they reboot with a new management company, they usually request a school name, and we traditionally grant it. It doesn't change anything but the, the name of the school on the wall. It doesn't change any, any financial entity, their school history, their audit history, none of that changes. It's just the name on the building.
I understand. It ju, it feels a little bit, I don't know, for me, it feels a little bit dishonest. Don't you wish we could change the name Banana Springs High School? You know what I mean, like, you know what I mean? Like, they're, they're allowed to avoid their history by changing their name, or at least from a perception perspective.
I kind of like that name, though. We worked real hard for that name.
You know what I mean, I'm, I'm kidding, but you, I mean, they're, from a perception perspective, there are some negatives associated with that. And, I don't know, it just feels dishonest to me, so.
There, there is a provision in, um, in our school board policy on school names in nine point one oh.
Yep, I saw that.
That provides for a, a name change when continuing with the name is, is unsatisfactory, so.
Okay, thank you.
For the sake of time, we need to move on. I have one question about the Palm, City of Palm's charter. That's a renewal?
Yes.
Okay, because I know there was discussion about them opening another one somewhere.
There's also, um, a new, uh, Palm River.
That's you.
Okay. Okay, alright, thank you. Uh, moving on to human resources, bless you. You have to do threes. Two questions. Any one? Any statements you would like us to be aware of?
No ma'am.
Can, on the administrators piece, the only, um, just looking at it, most of these are just reappointments and assignments of the principals is?
Yeah, so this is our, our, um, big time of year where we send the majority of our, uh, reappointments. So, any teacher that's on an annual contract that's getting reappointed will be, um, and has met all of their requirements will be on this board agenda. And then any of your, um, you know, just anybody that's on an annual contract of any kind, salary schedule N, they will, this is the, where the majority of those employees will show up. And since administrators are on an annual contract, um, the majority. Potentially, you could have some people that are recommended for reappointment, but maybe they haven't, um, followed through and gotten that certificate renewed just yet. Or, you know, they may have some, you know, some things they have to do in order to be able to, you know, complete the statutory requirements. So that's why we always do it at this first board meeting in June. That gives us that second board meeting in June to bring forward anybody else that hasn't, you know, that may not have been able to meet this deadline.
Okay, I did have one question.
Yes ma'am.
Why do you see, um, when I was looking at it, I seen that one person was, uh, on the recommendation and then one person was on retirement. They were on both. Is it because of the date?
It could potentially be, and I could check specifically, but it could be that they, um, are reappointed, but then their retirement date is, is gonna be after that time, potentially, yeah.
Another question. One thing I, I wanted to mention, I've spoken to the superintendent about before, is having, um, individuals on the action agenda and actually having them there at the same time. Hopefully, our agenda reviews will, you know, avoid any type of issues. However, I, I, and this is to the rest of the board, to maybe look at when, um, assignments are on an action agenda, but actually have them presented to the board at the following, um, action meeting. And I, I'm throwing that out for anyone else to have any comments about that or superintendent.
I would just say that has been our practice. Um, and it really, that's the celebration time for them to bring their family. And it kind of loses something if they get invited back two weeks or a month later. So, I mean, that's why it's been our practice to do that, um, but I'll defer to the superintendent.
Uh, it, it typically is a, it's a pretty special moment 'cause that is the moment where the board literally acts on, on the re, the appointment recommendation. And in the past, we've seen, I haven't seen it in a while, but, uh, um, now I'm going, going back a number of years where, you know, board, board members, you know, will make comments of it specifically about individuals since that opportunity have just made that recommendation and now, um, you know, congratulations.
Okay, I mean, I, I understand that and, and, um, hopefully because we have the, I'm sorry, does someone have their?
No, I was just, I, I was just going to express the opinion that I see no reason to change it.
Okay. And, uh, anyone else?
I agree, it's worked in the past.
Okay. And I, and I, actually doing the agenda review will help us to avoid, I just wanna make sure we avoid situations that happened to us earlier this year. And hopefully that any, uh, exceptions or comments will be made at the agenda review rather than at the agenda meeting. Okay?
Thank you.
Yes ma'am?
I just thought of something. Okay, so the reappointment under the teachers, that's specifically to schools. Is there a separate list somewhere on the teachers who were surplus?
So, the only teachers that are surplus are teachers on a professional services contract. Those teachers would never appear on a board agenda because they would only appear if they were being terminated and you would vote on that action.
Right, right.
Um, teachers that are on an annual contract that, um, did not have a position at their school will appear at such time as they secured a position for the next school year. And as long as they start, when school starts, then there's no break in service. So just because they're not on this agenda and let's say they don't get that job until July tenth.
Right, right.
There's no break in service, but they would appear then on that July board meeting.
So then we, yeah, since I've never gone through it before, it just occurred to me. So then, there would be a list at that time?
Correct, you'll see.
And where they, okay, and where they will be assigned?
Correct, yes, correct.
Okay, um, and how, is, is there a pool operating right now of, of the teachers that were not, um, reappointed to their school for various reasons?
Recruitment keeps an active, um, spreadsheet and we work those spreadsheets and source those candidates out as the openings, um, become available. As we get closer and closer to the start of school, because one of our, um, real important metrics is how many classrooms don't have a teacher on day one. So we really work that list. And then if we don't have a teacher that, if we're getting down to a week before, then we locate a certified employee that does not have students assigned to them and we assign them to a classroom for students. So that the goal, um, per my boss, is that every classroom on the first day of school will have a certified teacher in the classroom.
Good question.
I, I will tell you that my, the first time I approved, um, hires for, before the first day of school, it was unbelievable to me to see the amount of hiring. What I envision in HR during the summer is like a movie on Fast Forward. I envision them just.
It actually started, uh, you know, about two months ago. Because you think about it, we have to do all of the reappointments, process all of the evaluations, while at the same time trying to hire all the employees to start the next school year. So, yeah, it's, it's, um, it's a, it's a lot, a lot of work by, by staff.
Can I ask you to address one thing? One of the, the negatives that we were hit with was having to, um, reduce the number of, uh, assistant principals.
Yes.
And it's my understanding that they all, if they are within highly effective or effective, will have a position and have been told that, which is a positive thing, so can you address?
Yes, we had, um, we had five assistant principals that were, um, didn't, due to budgetary reasons, did not have a position, uh, for, for the next school year. Those, uh, five individuals, uh, have been reappointed and do appear on the reappointment. And we, um, as of this time, um, have positions for four of them. And we're working with that last candidate to make sure that they've secured, um, a position. Uh, there were, I believe, four assistant principals that were non-renewed due to performance reasons. Um, and those, uh, of course, would, would be guaranteed a teaching position, but would be on their own to secure an assistant principal position.
Okay, I just thought we needed to have that on the record.
Sure.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, operations. Any questions?
I five, I seven?
Okay, I five is approval of, uh, da, 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 Dalkin or Dakin? Dakin Applied Contract? And who would, and here comes our CFO, good afternoon. You wanna state your question?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, um, I think, I know the answer, none of this is being paid for out of referendum dollars, otherwise it would have been in there. But how do we make the determination? I mean, beyond the obvious list of items that are approved by, by, um, the voters, um, there are some items on that list that can be paid for out of, out of either capital or referendum dollars. So how do we decide, how do you decide whether we should be using referendum dollars for some of these things or whether we should be using regular capital budget dollars?
Right, okay, so we have a couple of different, um, things that come into play for that. We've got our capital committee and we've got our ISOC, the Independent Sales Cert, Cert Tax Oversight Committee. So what we've been working on within the capital committee is within the four categories that we had determined would be part of the referendum, uh, the construction, maintenance, security, and technology, determining, uh, what are the highest priority items based on, um, a lot of different things. Feedback from the community, feedback from what we know needs to be done across the district. So, after that, we make a determination, okay, how much of this money are we gonna split between the different categories? And then based on that, then what projects are prioritized highly for each of those different categories. A couple of things have to come into play. We want to make sure with the sales tax dollars that we have projects that go across the, you know, the breadth of the organization. We want all schools to be hit and we want high priority, hot projects to be hit. We need to, uh, address the growth in the district, so we have new schools within that money as well. And then within our maintenance projects and security, which ones are of the highest priority? And those are the ones that get categorized into the sales tax dollars. And then after we utilize those funds, then based on the priority of all the projects that we have left, how much can we fit into the cap, the regular capital funds that we have? And so we have our capital committee that helps us through that process and then our ISOC that, uh, kind of reviews that process with us.
Okay, and that's probably the answer for seven too. It appears as if the, I think it was an architect in seven?
Yep.
That appears to be construction-related, so I was just wondering why that wasn't referendum dollars. But, but if you're prioritizing, then that makes sense to me.
That's part of it also, the, uh, continuing contract for architectural services. All of those projects cap at two million dollars. So, the architectural services is for particular construction projects that are, that's, that, under that threshold. And with our, uh, sales tax referendum, when we went out to the public, we shared the priority of our construction projects would be construction of new schools. So we want to be that first hit in the category of construction, that we are using those funds for construction on new schools. That's not to say that over time, that, um, you know, smaller projects that are construction-related that, that hit the under two million dollar threshold might, um, go there. But the commitment we made to the community was we, our construction projects would be targeted at new schools. So that's where we're gonna put our construction, um, sales tax referendum funds first.
Great, thank you.
Other questions under construction? Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, the next would be, da, 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 I think that's it. Anything else, uh, we have a public hearing on the code of conduct and, um, any questions on that? Okay. If there's nothing else on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, we can move on. Thank you, so, and I hated to have you guys sit down and get right back up, but guess what? Let's move on to the budget, budget update. I almost said, "Don't leave," but I wasn't sure what we.
Dr. Atkins, are we having a briefing on Tuesday?
No. We have the opportunity today to discuss a call for it.
Okay, alright, well, you get me again, this time we have Kelly too. We're gonna pull up, uh, instead of doing the small presentation and then we will get started.
Talk about that after this. You can bring it up in your comments.
Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I know, I was just saying, we're gonna pull up the presentation and Kelly will join me this time and we'll get started.
Okay.
So we wanted to, just to introduce, as they're pulling that up, we wanted to introduce, uh, the FY twenty budget to you today by going over, uh, the different parts of the budget and then highlighting two specific funds today. And then in our subsequent briefings, which we'll talk about what the next, next steps are, we'll go, um, in-depth into other parts as well. So, with that being said, we'll start with Kelly.
Hi. So, the budget, we just wanted to kind of give you some, some people who are new, so we want to just go over, think. We have six parts of the budget. There's the, um, general fund or the operating budget, which is the main part of the budget that pays the salaries for your, our teachers and runs our schools and things. There's the debt service, which is the one that pays off our debt. Um, and so, just so you understand where all the funding comes from, of course, the general fund comes from the state and local dollars and then some other things that come in from outside sources. The debt service fund is primarily a transfer from your capital funds into the debt service to pay your debt. So it's not new money that's coming in, there's a small portion that is, but the majority of that is just a transfer from your capital into your debt. So it's not really additional money, it's money we already have that we transfer over to pay the debt. The capital funds, of course, are those that we use to maintain our schools. And that, um, mainly is from our, um, local property taxes. And now we have sales tax that we have, that's the biggest part of that. Of course, coming up in twenty, we don't have PICO for traditional schools in twenty. We had that previously, but the legislative, um, session, they gave all of the PICO money to the charter schools. And so, the traditional schools will not have PICO coming in. The special revenue fund is the grants that come in. So that is your, um, primarily your big grants are your IDEA, your Title I, your Title IV, your Title II. Those are the big grants that come in. And then you have smaller grants that we get as well. And then there's also competitive grants that we get. Um, then your internal service funds is, um, the account that used, that we use to pay for all of our insurance, our self-insurance, our workers' comp, our unemployment, all of those things. And again, that is just a transfer from the other funding sources into your self-insurance funds. That's not another set of money from somewhere else that comes in, it's a transfer over. So for every employee, you transfer money from the general fund or the federal grants, wherever they're paid from, into this fund to have paid for their health insurance and things. And then the food service fund, our funds that we get from this, uh, federal government for feeding our students, which you, you know, all know that one, we've gone over that. So the two funds we're gonna talk about today are the debt service and the food service funds. Sorry, um, that was me. Wanted to go over, first of all, so we've received our first calculation in from the state already. Um, that came the first part of May, so we wanted to touch on, um, with you all what we received. So our increase is gonna be, um, a little over thirty-six million dollars or five point one eight percent increase. But if you look, break that down, um, one of the big things they did, and I talked to you about this before, was they took the best embridus, which was paid from an outside funding source, and they moved that into the FEFP. So for Lee County, that's nine million dollars of our increase is tied to that best embridus. So when you take the best embridus out, our increase is actually a three point eight five percent increase. There are some additional things that were, um, provided to us this year and then some ongoing things I wanted to talk about. So the turnaround supplement, um, is provided to us at one point three million dollars. And basically, that is for some of our schools, which we have not yet identified. The state hasn't told us which schools these are. But there are two of our, I'm assuming two, it looks like from the FTE numbers that we have, but I don't know which ones, that, um, were identified in a turnaround status and they're no longer in that turnaround status. So, um, I just have to figure out which schools they are when they send us the information out and then I'll provide that information to you as well. Um, with something we've been receiving, and it's a small amount, but it's our federally connected student supplement. And that's basically a supplement that we receive and the charter schools get a portion of this too, for our military families, students of military families. And then, of course, our mental health allocation at two point three million dollars. Um, and I believe that Lori will probably be presenting a plan to you at some point on that mental health dollars and what they're gonna use those for.
Kelly, just a, a couple of quick, quick questions related to that first calc. The increase to the FEFP itself, that's just one question that you might highlight. And then the second, um, you got the mental health allocation, but then the safe school allocation and how that compares to last year.
Okay, so you had a, a handout that came with yours as well. And it was a comparison of the fourth calc to this, um, first calc. So in the mental health allocation, that allocation went up about two hundred and eight thousand dollars. And the safe school allocation, let me find it real quick here, went up about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So, um, and then the, um, the, when you look at the increase and you look at all of the different categoricals and stuff, actually, the amount of our categoricals is twelve million dollars of our total, um, budget. So, that's quite a bit of funding that's held for, and that, that's the increased part of, that's held for.
So, so the reason I bring that up? So, so the reason I bring that up is because when you look at items like compensation, you know, it, the increase, um, on its face appears to be a significant increase when you think about, you know, five, over 5%. Uh, but then when you start to break it down in terms of what gets placed into a categorical and then what is left in the general fund dollars that can be used directly to compensation, because I, you know, if I was a teacher, I'd be saying, wow, okay, 5% increase. And that's probably what will capture a lot of the headlines. But then when you start to look at, well, what's the reality in terms of what gets allocated to the F E F P that can really, and other sources that we can use that go directly to compensation, those numbers really get pared down.
They do. And if you look at the bottom of your calculation sheet that was provided to you, the $16.9 million is really what we have, um, that we can use for other things. Now that also has to cover our increase for retirement, or yeah, increase for retirement, increase in our health insurance cost and other things that, um, we're doing as well, which ends up being a 3.1% increase.
So last year, we broke it down to 47 cents. That was basically our BSA increase, right? And so I assume when we get through this budgeting process, you'll be able to give us a similar number and just, so from that perspective, we have a feel for what we're looking at.
We will be more than 47 cents though.
But where, where also does that fall on that, um, that chart that was produced that showed, uh, how funding from the state has not allowed us to keep pace with the rate of inflation as compared to the consumer pricing mix? And in the middle of that chart shows the BSA line and the lack of increase there. That visually for me is very helpful to understand as well.
So also within your packet as well, you've got a couple of pages from our budget book, one that says debt service on the top and the other one that says food service on the top. So we wanted to give you these as a reference and a reminder of what the budget looks like once we put all six funds together and you see how we break it down one fund at a time. So the debt service fund, as Kelly mentioned earlier, is the special fund where we account for all of the debt payments, principal and interest of the district. So we account for all of those in a fund by themselves. And the funding, again, comes from a transfer from capital. So that funding for debt service comes straight from a ca, transfer either from the 1.5 mils or previously had been from the impact fees, which we've had some discussion about as well. There are mandated or statutory requirements related to how much debt a district can carry and that is, uh, codified in statute. So by state statute, school districts, their legal annual debt service amount can be no more than 75% of what we earn from our 1.5 mils or one, or of our property taxes for capital. So as of this year, we were at 56% of that legal debt capacity. And, uh, in years past, we had tried to stay within 50% of that instead of 75% of that. So when we're looking at that, that benchmark of 50% were 84% of our recommended capacity this year. So whenever we take on new debt, we're always in, you know, have that in mind of where are we in terms of our statutory capacity and is that where, you know, are we where we want to be in terms of that? Because of course, the more money we use to pay debt, the less money we have for, um, you know, things that are going on right now in our current state. Hopefully that percentage will continue to go down with our new funding source. Yes, ma'am.
Does, the sales tax bond is not included in that calculation, that 75% calculation, is it?
Any debt service. So, mm-hmm, to, yes, to my, to my knowledge, any debt services. Mm-hmm. So.
And that, that was the question I had, the, uh, projection that we were going to borrow against the sales tax. So that would increase that 57%.
It, yes, it would. To, and we'll, we'll make sure to do the, you know, to go do the research and, and make sure, but I am pretty positive that it's any and all principal and debt, principal and interest payments that a district is paying.
Not that state statutes always make a lot of sense, but if we're looking at a percentage of your 1.5 mil, why would we include debt that goes against revenue that's outside that 1.5?
There, there could be a, a exception for that, that takes that out. So we're, we're new at this funding source, so we're glad to be new at the funding source. So I will double check that, but I, I don't know that it distinguishes between one and the other.
So can you distinguish for us, if, if there is no dis, if there's no, if it doesn't make that distinction in the statute, can you distinguish for us and show us where we are in terms of our debt, um, our COPs debt as compared to the 1.5 mil and separate out the debt? Because to me, that's not debt.
Yes.
When I'm thinking about where our maximum debt should be, the sales tax referendum is separate in my mind.
Yes, we can. Yes, we can. And we have written that down to do the research and ask the attorneys and make sure that, um, is it accepted or is it not accepted?
Great. Thanks.
Okay. But yes, we can definitely break it out and we have a whole, um, you know, the debt service schedule, which is part of the, the book, the budget book as well, that lists all the debts from all of the different sources, each of the different COPs issues, and we can separate out that sales tax bond, so you can see specifically how much that is, where that is, and then on the capital plan, how that impacts the debt service payment itself.
Great.
Yep. Mm-hmm. Okay. So we have, um, as far as the different types of debt service, where we land mostly within, um, our district is with certificates of participation. So that's where, you know, 99% of our debt comes from, but then of course, coming up here very soon, we'll have the addition of the sales tax bond, as you mentioned. And so this debt service page will have the breakout of everything that we pay, any transfers that we're bringing in from the capital fund for those principal and interest payments, and then as well as all of the payments that go out for principal and interest. And we can separate out what is the COPs versus sales tax in several different illustrations.
Okay.
We've also, que, question?
Go ahead. We, we have to move along because we do have a, a call coming in for another.
Oh, yes, ma'am. So the last thing is we also just have, um, the food service fund and again, you have the breakdown, um, from the budget book there. The revenues from, um, food service mainly come from the reimbursements that we get for each of our meals from the USDA for our, and we have several programs, breakfast, lunch, snack, supper, and the summer program. Um, we are part of the CEP, Community Eligibility Program. So all of our students, um, ate free this year and will continue to eat free, um, next year, eat without, without charge for next year as well. And then we just wanted to note within the information what that revenue supports, over 6,000 lunches per day, 64,000 lunches per day, and including educational programs like the Healthy Lab and the Healthy Fit Lab. So our next steps related to the budget, just to wrap up, so you all can move on, we will have another brief for you on June 20th with some additional detail for you. We wanted to give some overview today. We will have a tentative budget hearing on July 30th. And then after that, the property tax notices or the TRIM, the Truth in the Milage notices will be released by the property appraiser very soon after that public hearing. Uh, we have a, a possible additional briefing as well for you and then leading up to the final hearing for the budget on September 10th. So.
One quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Operational costs at the bottom of food service, is that the money that we were able to recoup from the Gibson audit?
I know that the money that we were able to, the, we did put more, um, we paid for more of our operational, uh, to the tune of about $2 million.
Okay.
Uh, that was, um, basically what you're looking at there is a shifting of indirect costs, uh, to the federal fund versus the general fund. So thanks to the Gibson audit, they were able to identify some indirect costs such as, um, you know, like electricity, custodial, I think, and things like that, that were, we were paying for out of our general fund that we were able to shift and the federal grant was paid, paid for that.
While you're still here, we're going to take a second because, um, very topical is the, um, deadline that we have tomorrow for responding to the audit, which eventually will, could possibly have an, an impact on all of this. Um, can you just give us a brief update as to where we're at on that?
I can, yes. We've been working with the board attorney since we last left the briefing here, working on the, uh, response. We've gone back and forth with a couple of different drafts. We are, um, going to finalize that and be ready to send, send that information out tomorrow.
And then it's a waiting game to see when they get back to us?
Yes, yes, it is.
When is, when is their deadline to let us know about our F E F P for next year?
Well, the, well, the deadline to let us know about the F E F P is by statute, the, the legislature has to give us a second calculation, which is the one that we will base the tentative budget on by July 19th. So that's their deadline to let us know that. But there is no deadline for them, for the DOE to let us know what happens with the, you know, the appeal that we're filing. So we have to be prepared to react either way whenever that word comes down.
So the potential could be that we would get our F E F P on July 19th and then after that, find out that there may be some difference or change in it.
Yes, it could. Remember, we're, we're not looking at getting, um, any deduction from our F E F P.
Right.
What we have to do is plan within the budget, what will happen if we have to do a related transfer based on the DOE's, uh, work, based on the DOE's ruling.
Right. See, I.
The F E F P will not be, will not change either way it goes.
Because we'll make sure that we do the transfer rather than being, okay.
Yeah, we, we've made it, you know, real clear that, that we want to, to work with the Department of Education and so we would, um, you know, we would be complying to their recommendation.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Um, one last question, let me ask you this. Where will this information that you give us now, where do we, can we house that in someplace altogether, uh, like we did the report that you gave us the last time? Can this be added to, you know, that Google Docs or wherever we decided to keep that report?
Well, do you mean, do you mean the PowerPoint, these backups here? Cause it's part of the briefing material, which I think stays out there.
Okay.
But if you want something with all budget things in one place, we can certainly work with the superintendent's office to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Um, thank you to everyone. We're moving on to the school board auditor and if we can let them know that we are, um, ready, I believe they were going to get them online earlier. RSM.
So I can just let them know that you're ready?
Yes, you can go ahead and put them through. Thank you, Jeff.
I just say hello.
Okay. Tell us when. Do we just say hello when they're here?
You'll keep your voice.
Okay. All right. RSM is our internal auditor company that we, um, have retained and I spoke with them last week about their next steps, the next process. And you should have all received, or it should be in here too, their, uh, plan for doing the risk assessment. Thank you, staff. Um, for the risk assessment and anything else that, um, we need them to do. So I believe Ms. Ewing, are we here?
Hi.
Ms. Ewing, is that you?
That is me.
Okay. Good afternoon. Can you perhaps introduce yourself and, uh, let everyone know, uh, while you're on with us today?
Hi, I'm Claire Ewing and pleasure meeting with you all. Uh, live with my mom. Workshop. Sorry, we couldn't be there today in person with notice. But I was, Ms. Gittens and I had been discussing the risk assessment. So we sent her a draft of the statement of work, um, what that project will look like, et cetera. So she wanted me to be available today if you all had any questions.
And everyone hopefully has taken a look at this. Do we have any questions?
When does it start? When are they going to get started?
Okay. Um, Ms. Ewing, the question is when you will actually start? Is that up to us to tell you or you're ready to pull the trigger when we say so or how are we doing that?
So, um, we'll have to get an, a statement of work executed. Right now it's still in draft, so let's get this executed and then we can work, we'll coordinate with you all on the timeline.
Okay.
On what works for everyone.
And you did mention when we were talking that, um, you had already began to look at some of, um, the things that are happening in the district and, um, regarding even our audits and that type of thing. Can you address that briefly?
Yes, certainly. Yeah, so we have looked at your, um, financials, your cap, your, um, previous reports issued by the auditor general. So some of those topics that you're seeing within those areas will most probably rise, um, to your, um, top 10. What Ms. Gittens and I were talking about last week is what we foresee doing for you all is putting together your high-risk audit universe at this point in time and then providing you with a top 10, um, of audit areas, because no one has a never-ending budget to be able to do every high-risk area. So we'll give you a top 10 at this point in time, um, for you all, to help you all prioritize where you want us to go. Um, you know, based on what we're seeing, um, I think some of those construction, maintenance, IT areas will most probably, 10, including since you really haven't had an internal audit function before, we call it the ABCs and the one, two, threes of your financial processes. Um, you know, timekeeping, um, P card, if you have any, property control, et cetera. Because school districts typically function from a decentralized perspective, so some of those areas typically are just inherently high-risk because of the dollars, because of the volume, et cetera. But we'll, we'll be able to learn even more as we're, um, in meeting with you all and going through any additional information that we will, we are requesting. Um, we will meet, our goal is to meet with every board member individually and then, um, the superintendent and his senior leadership as well, so we can really get a broad understanding of your school district specifically and your environment.
Is it when you've received this signed document and you're ready to go?
Right. So once we can get this executed, we'll work on the timeline of when we can get the interview scheduled, um, et cetera, because we'll need to work through everyone's availability from that perspective.
Um, comments, questions from anyone?
No.
Any thoughts? Okay. I know that, um, go ahead. Did you have?
I, I was only going to say that let's just ensure that we move forward on this ASAP so that we can start this.
And it's kind of in response to you were mentioning, Ms. Patrica about, um, and, and also Ms. Giavanelle, we had asked about an audit and it's kind of floating around out there about us needing an audit. Um, and I say to you all that having, engaging this company will allow us to do that without having to go through, uh, other outside agencies or whatever. We have a company already that is ready to do that. And if we, and Ms. Ewing, am I correct that when you give us the list of priorities, that we still, as a group, can decide if we want to shift or move something to a higher, uh, priority?
Absolutely.
Question, I hope, of us needing, uh, an outside audit. We have an auditor.
That's not what I read in the email that was sent by Ms. Giavanelle. She called for an independent investigation, which is different from an audit. And I, I agree with you. I believe that RSM services are going to, um, cover any concerns I might have, but I don't really want to have that discussed.
Well, let's ask Ms. Giavanelle, would that suffice for you?
Chris is correct. Yeah, Chris is correct.
Okay. So how could we suffice your, your question? If we do the audit with RSM, would you, uh, be content with that or would there be other options?
Well, this isn't, this isn't just me. This has all seven of us to decide.
No, I, I know. But I'm just saying, since she said what we're saying is not what you said, would this be okay?
I'm curious to speak with the auditor and, and see exactly what, I'm really, the risk is, is going to, is really important. So the risk, you know, that they're doing right now, you know? So.
All right.
I mean, sorry. I think that, uh, it's important to hear everything and, and read everything and, and make that determination. So that's all.
As a group, once they talk. So Ms. Ewing, it's, and I'm sorry, you had your hand up, um, Ms. Fong.
I, I was just going to add that, um, as, as Giavanelle said, we'll see that, we'll, we'll see where the areas of concern are and then at that point, if we wish to do do a deeper dive into, into something which may, in fact, in effect have, um, an investigation, but that's, I would assume, way down the road depending on what turns up.
And this would be our first step?
Right, as a first step, exactly.
To do this to kind of see where we're at and then we can prioritize. And I think as Ms. Ewing mentioned, the fact that they're going to talk to each person individually, then you could, you know, definitely state which things you think are most important and then we decide.
Correct.
Okay?
I was just gonna say, we discussed this before and we were just, because we have to do this before July, so we're just making sure that they've come and they've spoken to us, so we pretty much know what they're about. And as far as, um, we just need to get this finished and get it off the table and move on to the next, so thank you for bringing it up.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, if there's anything that, that we need to do as staff to make sure that, that, you know, we get the documents across the finish line, just let us know.
I think we are, Ms. Ewing, if, I'm correct, uh, if you want to send the documents, uh, to me without the draft on there for the final execution and then I can get with the superintendent and staff to make sure everything is on there, signed properly and gotten, and we get it back to you as soon as possible. And I would like to suggest that as early as next week that we talk about, um, your schedule and moving on and when that's gonna happen so the rest of the board can, um, give their input.
Okay, that sounds great.
Week, as soon as you send us the final, we'll get it back to you and then we'll go from there.
Okay, I will update that.
Are there comments or questions from anyone? All right, thank you, Ms. Ewing, and we look forward to seeing you in person and your team.
Thank you, thank you.
And thank you for taking the time.
Absolutely.
Okay. Yes.
We just have to get this on the agenda to vote, right? I mean, they sign it and then we have to vote for, so.
If, if I get it back, uh, no, everything's voted on.
Oh, then, then, okay.
As soon as she gets it back to me, I will sign it and.
Okay, that's why, that's why I didn't understand.
We should know and I'll give you an update as soon as we can.
Okay.
All right. Okay, thank you. Moving on then to, let's see, we're at 3:30, we have half an hour, we're supposed to have 60 minutes for the board attorney. Um, Dr. Pruitt, you are handling this section.
I, I am facilitating whatever you need me to do as a next action on this item.
Okay. All right.
We are here at your service.
Okay, comments, questions that anyone has already regarding this? I think where we're at and maybe clarify if we're not, is that we have, uh, you know, selected our attorneys for, at this time. This process is to look at what we're gonna look like going forward, also to discuss whether we are going to, uh, maintain a singular board attorney as opposed to, and we also need to think about this with the, um, auditor, if they will report solely to the board and not be working with, um, the district, uh, attorneys as well. So, is that correct, that where we're at?
The, well, the, the decision that needs to be made, um, for the take a next action is how you see your legal services as a school board. Your options, um, are to, you know, have a standalone school board attorney, which has been the position of, in the past, how you have done that. Secondly, to adopt a general counsel model where it would be a legal department in which you would have a, a kind of a hybrid. And then the third option would be to continue legal services using, um, an outside firm to address your, your needs.
Can you address that last one? Uh, you're saying continue to use, oh, okay, the second one was just an individual attorney?
It would be a general counsel model where you would have an individual that would oversee a legal department, um.
Okay, comments, board members?
I do. Um, I think that we should have a board attorney and then Mr. Williams and then another person to assist him.
So, thank you.
Instead of having the outside.
Right, so to clarify, um, anything outside of the board attorney services or the services to the board, uh, would be, Dr. Atkins will come forward through the budget process with his recommendation, so he may say, you know, I have a staff attorney and then an assistant staff attor, like he'll come forward and, so that decision doesn't need to be made today cause that will come forward as a recommendation from Dr. Atkins.
I would, anyone else before I speak? Cause I would like to, to put on the table the fact that we would have a board specific attorney and that that be in the form of, uh, what we have now with, um, an agency as opposed to an individual being hired to sit in that position. And I also feel that they should, um, be the board attorney and not necessarily, uh, involved with the district's everyday, um, uh, legal matters. And I think I mentioned this before, that if Dr. Atkins and, and, um, Mr. Williams feel that they need other assistance, that they should look at, um, hiring that staff and that team that they need in order to do that. Thoughts or comments?
Well, from, from my perspective, I think that, um, you know, either model is workable, I think that, um, from, from where, when Mr. Williams and I have had, um, these discussions, I, I certainly feel that there is some advantage to, um, you know, working with an external organization that has a multiple, uh, multiple, uh, or many attorneys with different, uh, levels of expertise in, in a multiple, multitude of areas. Likewise, I do think there's some specific areas, um, in the district side of the House that could, could, where we could utilize, um, maybe an attorney in a specific area, but, but also, we employ external attorneys as well, it's, ESE is an example where you have, um, uh, someone who has that, uh, special, uh, knack or special expertise in the law. So, uh, you know, I think either is workable, but, um, that's the advantage of, of having kind of that multifaceted model as opposed to just two roles.
And, and what was shared with me, um, was a, just relative to that model, um, that, no offense, Mr. Bierman, but, um, the financial side of the House and obviously negotiating a different contract than we currently have, um, that would, would allow the opportunity for board members to feel comfortable calling whenever they had a question and not worrying about that hourly rate racking up as a result of that. So, I, I would say to you that that would be a discussion point, in my opinion, uh, relative to that option.
And I think we've already discussed that, Mr. Bierman, do you wanna address the?
Uh, sure. Um, well, uh, first I'd like to say I, I appreciate your, your vote of confidence and we really appreciate the opportunity to serve the school board. Uh, it sounds like the direction you're going in is to keep the functions of the staff attorney and the school board attorney separate and, um, you know, with regard to our firm, you can work with us for as long or as short as you want and if, you know, something else comes along and you wanna do it a different way, it's, there's no, um, typically we don't have, um, you know, a minimum term, you know, it's a 30-day notice type of at-will agreement. With respect to the rates, you know, we're, um, our hourly rates are about, are, are half or less than, than what we would charge a commercial entity for the exact same service, you know, if I handle it, if I write an EEOC response for the school board, I, I'm charging $2.65 an hour, I'm charging a private client $550 an hour. So, it's a, it's a very discounted hourly rate. If you wanna go to a flat rate, I would suggest that we at least have a few more months of experience at the hourly rate to kind of understand where, what, what the needs are going to be on a reg, on a regular basis so that we can evaluate what we think would be an appropriate flat rate that would, you know, provide fair compensation to us and provide you with an economic solution. I will say in response to, uh, Ms. Pruitt's comment about feeling free to call us, we don't charge you when you call us. When, when members call us and, you know, we, we're not, you can ask the question, we're not gonna charge you if, if it results in a project or research, we do charge for the project or the research that we wind up doing, but, you know, um, I've been on the phone with many of you many times, you, when you review the bills, you won't see a charge for that. The other thing is that typically where we do a flat fee, there are certain exclusions from that, um, litigation is one, it's very difficult to predict with any accuracy how much effort, uh, a litigation matter will take because you're largely at the mercy of the opposition and how quickly they move and how much, how much activity they generate. So, typically we would want, uh, uh, an hourly rate for litigation and certain other kinds of matters that are, that are not sort of everyday matters. So, it's typically a hybrid where there's an amount that covers all of the sort of everyday matters and then there's an amount that, you know, that which would be the attendance at the meetings and, and the, the regular types of activities, the, you know, um, sometimes when, when Mr. Williams wants another set of eyes on something or where something requires that the school board attorney look at it, we look at it, you know, that, that would be covered, but if there's a lawsuit that we handle, that would be a, a separate matter. If there's a matter that's paid for by a third party, which is in our agreement now where a third party pays, we, we don't charge, we charge different hourly rates if that's a, third party's a commercial entity, you know, that's another type of exclusion that, that we would have. But we, we would certainly be very open to working out some, uh, a, a, a flat rate plan for a, for a longer range, uh, arrangement.
So, you're asking to give you at least a couple of months though to do that?
To, to evaluate what would be an appropriate flat rate. I, I'll also say that we're, you know, we may be taking on responsibilities that you otherwise would have outsourced to another law firm that you would also be paying hourly rates to. I feel that even where my hourly rate is higher than another law firm, I do it faster. So, it's not so much how much you charge, it's how long it takes you to do it. But, you know, you could, uh. I, I just, you know, I don't wanna brag, but I think we do it faster because we have more relevant experience, but that may not always be the case. We, we certainly feel very comfortable with the end result.
Okay, Ms. Fisher, you had your hand up.
No, I did not.
I did.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yes, Ms. Fisher.
So, I'm curious, would you be able to handle all facets of the school district's business then, we wouldn't have to refer out to anyone else or would we still have to do that?
Well, there are certain things, first of all, there are certain things that I think Mr. Williams' office handles that, 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 you know, are, if you wanna keep the functions separate, obviously they're gonna continue to handle those. So far, from what I've seen, everything that has come forward so far, things within our wheelhouse, we have the expertise, we have construction lawyers, we have labor lawyers, we have public finance lawyers, we have real estate and land use lawyers. So, I think for the most part, all those things that wouldn't, are, are in, in our current agreement are things that we cover and there are some additional areas that, that can be covered. We, we, there are times in, you know, even when it's within an area of expertise that we have, that there's a conflict. For example, we represent a company called Crown Castle, they build, um, wireless infrastructure. If they were to come and have, wanted, have, enter into a contract with the school board, you could waive the conflict, but if you didn't waive the conflict, you'd have, you'd have another attorney review that, that contract.
Thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
So, I feel like, um, we have not grown up in terms of the provision of legal services in the district, uh, we have two attorneys and our work far exceeds what two human beings or even a law firm can do for us. I have had a significant change of heart from the last time the board discussed this, I really like the chief counsel model. I think that the way we're doing it right now is very disjointed, I think it leads to inefficiencies and I think things fall through the cracks. I had huge concerns about conflict, um, what if there's a conflict between the board and the superintendent? But from what I understand, if there's a conflict between the board and the superintendent, the chief counsel works for the board, so the superintendent has to get an attorney if there's a conflict. That's been my understanding in, in the research that I've done. I don't see why we would continue to have disjointed legal services when we can bring most of this in under, under one department. And what I envision is this, I envision a chief, a chief counselor who would look at the legal needs of the district, like take a deep dive look at what do we need, what takes up most of our time, what takes up most of our money and determine what attorneys need to be hired from there. And those attorneys will specialize in areas such as real estate contracts, corporate, workers' comp, academics, school operations, policy charter schools, risk management, litigation, all of that. Um, and, and the, the list goes on from there. And, and we're not looking necessarily, um, Dr. Pruitt, you gave us a number in here for operations and finance attorney of around $178,000, that would be an estimated cost to the district, right now we're paying about $331,000, $332,000 for those services outside. We don't have to hire six attorneys who make about $74 a year, we can hire one assistant chief counsel and then they can hire attorneys or we can follow the county's model and poach attorneys from like the state's attorney's office or other places where they're making less than what we can pay them, but nowhere near the $100,000 range and they can be trained in these areas. Am I making sense? So, we can grow a legal department and I really feel like we need to, and, and don't take this the wrong way, I'm not being insulting, but I feel like we need to grow up in terms of the provision of legal services, there's massive things that we need to look at, contracts, for example, we need to completely restructure the way this district handles contracts. We need, we need to start to take a deep look at our policies. And, and I know, um, Ms. Morgan, that you raised Neola and the money wasn't there last year, but I think we kinda have to just rip the Band-Aid off and force ourselves to do that and we're going to need the legal help to get that done. So, I really, I really, really like the chief counsel model and I feel very strongly that, um, that we, we need to grow up from here. Yes, sorry.
Well, I would say as, as we mature as a governance team, that, that, that would be something that, that we can consider. I don't, I don't, I think that we still have to have, um, more time as a, as a team to, um, to come together because that requires a lot of collaboration. You know, as a superintendent, you're going to have to feel and need to be comfortable with the legal services that you receive because we have to make, Mr. Williams and I have to make some very important decisions relative to the, the operation of the school district, um, as it relates to, you know, all different kind of matters. I mean, we're talking construction stuff today and, and dealing with a vendor and, and then you turn around and you're, you're talking about an employment matter. And so, there has to be a high level of trust there. And, you know, if, if you do have conflict that exists, it makes it very difficult when you're dealing with someone who's also on the opposing side and, and then you're trying to trust that person to be able to give you the best recommendation relative to a, a high-profile employment matter. So, I think that, you know, moving forward, I think that, that may be a goal, um, but I think it's gonna take us some time to get there.
I left one thing out of my.
Excuse me, someone else had raised their hand.
Well, just let her finish.
Please. Go in order with, someone else raised their hand over here?
Yes. Yeah, I, I did, um, what, what I'd like, Mr. Bierman, to explain is, um, because I am quite frankly worried about conflict of interest with the mo, with that model and I know about, um, attorney, uh, client privilege, but how, can you explain how that is either the same or different or, or how it differs in terms of a board attorney? Let's say members of, of this school board came to the board attorney and, um, wanted something very specific and would you be?
Well, so, I think the first and most important thing is that the board attorney acts at the direction of the board as a whole.
Right, right.
Right, right.
It is my policy to provide individual and confidential advice to each individual member where it does not conflict with direction that I have received from the board as a whole. So if the board as a whole directs the attorney to file an action to do some, whatever it is, a declaratory judgment action, and one member dissents from that and I have a conversation with a member and the member says, "I want you to withdraw that action," I can't do that.
Right.
If the member says to me, "How do I put into action this idea that I have for a new technology center?" And the member wants me to keep that conversation confidential, I'm going to keep that conversation confidential.
Okay. And that's what, I wasn't thinking about the other thing, overturn something, but that, let's say that I wanted to bring something in front of the board, make a motion in front of the board that might, heaven forbid that we should have anything that's controversial, but that might be controversial and bring up a lot of discussion among the board members to get assistance from the board attorney and the board attorney would be keeping that confidential.
That's how, that's how I work. Now, the attorney-client privilege applies, it's differing, it's not-
That's what I wanted to clarify.
That's what I believe is the best practice for an attorney representing a board of individuals. Privilege, the legal privilege, applies to communications about, with the board as a whole and with board members about board matters that may wind up being litigated. And it's an evidentiary rule in which the attorney cannot be asked to testify about what a client told the attorney in confidence. And that's what, that's what privilege means. I believe that it applies to most of the communications, not only between the attorney and the board that are done in confidence, for example, in executive session, but also the individual discussions that the board attorney has with board members because all of those are about things that could potentially wind up being evidentiary matters.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just, I wanted to add something because I believe it puts it in context, your discussion. I think one of the things, and we've tossed this around before and it will come into play when you decide to either go with external counsel, is the actual roles of the attorneys because I think that it's kind of been a little undetermined what those are. And I think the result of that is because you've had changes in attorneys and I think as I came in, for example, I brought a different skill set so there were areas that I could deal with that I don't think previously had been dealt with on the staff attorney side. And I was actually just looking at the staff attorney's description before I came up here and it primarily focuses on HR, which I think originally was the original function of the staff attorney, working in the HR department, doing student discipline and some other things. But you have a lot of legal issues that go well outside of that. And again, even with the school board attorney role, you know, parsing out what those specific roles would be, so whether it be an operational audit, responses to OIG, contract review, legislative issues, just really clarifying what those are will help you approximate what the cost would be to hire an external law firm or to put a staff and attorney with that relevant experience. I will agree with some of the comments that identifying one individual that has that breadth of knowledge is almost impossible. And I do acknowledge that there are attorneys that sit as school board attorneys for various districts, but I think they also use a lot of outside counsel assistance. And I think that's the thing that kind of gets missed in this in terms of identifying that role. Whereas the staff attorneys typically are doing day-to-day legal work directly for the district. So I think in terms of resources, and I know that conversation is separate with respect to the superintendent bringing a recommendation, one of the things I just wanted to clarify is what the roles are because again, once you identify the roles, it'll kind of, I think it'll help foster the decision that you reach ultimately with respect to the-
And in response to that, that was my thought all along is that whoever, if we have an individual counsel, all of these things that they don't know, they're still going to have to ask, you know, get an outside firm or someone else to help with areas that they don't have expertise. And if we have a group per se, a firm per se, it's not going to be at least, and maybe I'm wrong, but it's expensive to go out and find an individual that will help us with this. We've already got that, we've already got a flat fee, we've already got, we know what it's going to cost us. Each time that you have to go out or we have to go out and get someone else to help with an issue that we don't have expertise in, it's going to cost us money. So we, and we don't know what that dollar amount looks like. Ms. Fisher, I'm sorry, you had a comment.
Yes. So one of the questions I have for Mr. Bierman is the agreement we have with you currently, is there a time certain when that ends?
I had understood that it was a six-month minimum.
Right.
And, you know, of course, that's fine, but if you find that you want to terminate that earlier or extend it, we're very flexible.
Okay. Yeah, and that was my understanding. I just wanted to clarify that. I appreciate, Brian, that you talked about the roles. I think that we had been operating with a system for many years and I think that times have changed. And I called seven other districts of similar or like size and so many of them do not use just one attorney. Some of them just contract when they need them and some of them use a firm like Mr. Bierman's firm and get all of the areas covered. As I read through Dr. Pruitt's letter and recommendation, to me, it made sense. I know Ms. Patrica said, you know, we need to grow up. I think we need to come of age and I think that we need to look at the way that we'll be able to deal with all of the issues, serve the board and the district. I mean, because we are a governance team, so I'm having a little bit of difficulty with the amount of concern about someone who will only respond to the board. I know in talking to some of our former attorneys that they actually did work together, you know, in many instances and that was what helped with the efficiency and covering. And then, of course, we spent another hundred and somewhat thousand on contracting out. So if we're looking at maximizing our resources, being efficient and effective and working as a governance team, I'm inclined to agree with Dr. Pruitt's recommendation at this time.
And can I, just to be clear, your recommendation is a chief counsel?
That was the recommendation when we did all of the research before Mr. Dodig was hired. But at that time, the board as a whole had a different view on what direction to go at that time.
Yes.
Mr. Bierman, Attorney Bierman, I wanted to actually start my comments by saying that I appreciate the work that you've done for this board and I feel like we have a sort of a level of advocacy that we haven't had for quite some time. So I know that you're not going to take anything that I say personally, but I just want you to know that I appreciate the quality of the work that you've done for this board up to this point. Attorney Williams, you mentioned roles for a board attorney, whatever structure we use. When I think about a board attorney versus a staff attorney, I think about unfettered access for me versus calling the superintendent's office and saying, "Hey, I have a question about policy. Can I go to Attorney Williams?" So the areas where I would like to have unfettered access to a board attorney are guidance for board members with regard to our role as board members versus the role of the superintendent, guidance and advice for board members regarding ethics and sunshine, parliamentarian, board committees, advising them, training them, answering our questions, answering member questions with regard to what they can and cannot do. Legislative affairs, to me, that's huge. Where should we be making recommendations for change at the state level? Drafting legislation that we'd like to propose at the state level, sort of really being our partner in that. Policy review, Ms. Morgan, I mentioned that I think Neola at this point is a must, but we need a point person, an attorney who will handle that for us. Audits, if the board attorney is ours, if that's the person we go to, we have questions or concerns about audit findings, our board attorney should be there for us. Administrative complaints from the DOE like the IOG investigation, the Head Start investigation. And I don't see the resources right now in your office, Dr. Atkins, for a review of our contract process, but I think that's going to lead to huge efficiencies. So I'd like to see a board attorney tackle that as well. Making our contracts more uniform so that we can be reviewing one contract per service instead of however many vendors we have contracts per service. Does that make sense? Those are the areas I'd like to see. You asked a question, that's-
Yes. So then, what you're describing sounds to me like not necessarily one individual.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Correct.
Can I suggest this? We are getting at a couple of minutes to four. We need to move on to an item that we must cover today. Some members have said they have to leave, but we do need to continue and get this done. Can I suggest that based on even the items, can you forward that or have that put out so of the things that you feel are important, Ms. Patrica? And then we can all look at it. Let's say Mr. Bierman can say, for example, of the list of things that were stated, how would that look if you as, you know, an organization, a firm, were to do those things? Perhaps to have a comparison of costs for them to do, you know, all the things that we need as opposed to an individual counsel and then also including the cost of what the superintendent's office needs for legal. I mean, help for Brian to do all of the things like he said. He's in this area, we need all of the others. What is it, what's the differential of us hiring a firm to work with what your needs are as opposed to having to farm it out as we need it? And, you know, just kind of looking at those different silos and seeing how can we do this? Does that sound feasible? I know I haven't said it-
Are we, I'm just going to clarify, so it would be, what is the superintendent's recommendation to address legal services?
On the district side and then based on the things that we need, the cost of continuing with a firm who has all of the areas that we may or may not need at that time as opposed to an individual independent attorney that's just here and that's out?
Other amounts other than Mr. Bierman's firm or?
No, I mean, I, oh, I don't know. I-
I think, I think that you've got a, you, of the models you suggested here, you can go back to what you had when you had Mr. Dodig, who was your in-house full-time employee and he had an office here and he was here every day and he did what we're doing, but there were a lot of things that, a lot of new things that we're doing that because of the additional capacity that we have. So one of those models is you still have the same person and then that person purchases the additional services-
As needed.
As needed. Or the model that you have now, which is that we serve in that role and we basically do all of those, all of those things. And then separately, because you're still talking about having an independent school board attorney separate from a board staff attorney office, the board staff attorney has additional things that, additional services that he's buying in the legal market that some of which may be done by just having additional full-time employee attorneys.
Right. And that will be determined between the superintendent and- So I know you mentioned a flat rate earlier, so maybe giving that information, I personally would hate to see us start all over again and start looking and doing all of that.
No, I agree. I just wanted to clarify what you were asking.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And then just looking at from what we have now with them as opposed to the flat rate or whatever, I mean, the conversation between the two of you.
Okay.
Ms. Morgan?
Because I had, Jordan.
Jordan, I changed it.
No, and the one thing is, I know that, I believe that Dr. Pruitt had received something on an update on the national search, which of course you could not possibly have done because you did not receive the information from us. We're to move forward. So I just want to put that out there that was sent to you a couple of weeks ago, maybe, I think I read it. So we would not be doing a national search for anyone-
We, yes.
Because we're waiting for everything to-
We have not moved forward with that. What we did know is that Mr. Dodig had shared with his colleagues across the state, other staff attorneys and other board attorneys, that the position potentially was going to be vacant and he received no inquiries, which is kind of an indicator of what we might find if we were to have done a national search. But you are correct, we did not move forward with that. Yeah.
Okay. So are we all agreed then, shall we, that they will present us with those options? And then we will go on from there and in the time being, we will continue with Mr. Bierman's firm as things are going now? Can I have consensus on that?
I'm not really clear on what the next step is.
To, that we continue with Mr. Bierman's firm, that they will, between the superintendent and his team and Mr. Bierman and Dr. Pruitt, that they will present us with the comparison of the items that we discussed in case we do want to make any changes. Is that-
I'm understanding we're going to present the, what we see from the district side, what a legal team, maybe even a phased approach of how we see that, you know, evolving over the next couple of years in meeting the legal needs of the district. And then I guess from our side, present what the cost of hiring a, potentially a chief counsel slash board attorney and what the expense would be to the district. And then Mr. Bierman will share with us, potentially based on the things Ms. Patrica said, how that might look in a long-term arrangement with the district.
So I didn't hear you say it's too, it's premature for you to give us any kind of an estimate?
Well, you know, I had asked earlier in the conversation for a couple of months of track record to come up with what I think would be an appropriate flat rate. I mean, I, yeah, I think that's prudent for all of us because, you know, we may go through, in this first month, obviously, a lot of things happen very, very quickly and we were drinking from a fire hose. And next month, maybe quiet and, you know, we'll go through cycles and so we can kind of get an average.
Yeah, so can't they just give us a possible, an estimate, bottom-line number?
Right. And giving, given some time to come up with it is what he was saying.
Would September 1st be an appropriate?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And we could at that time present all of the information in, at September at a briefing workshop, whatever the board desires?
So then we are looking at recommendations from the superintendent and Attorney Williams about the expansion of-
To work together.
Correct.
In-house legal.
That's my understanding.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Okay, we must, must, must do the next one, which is the advisory committees 1.20. And just to make sure everyone understands, in order to change anything in policy, we have to go through the process of the pre-briefing, which is today, and then the briefing and then the final public comment and vote at an action meeting. Because of the essence of time in getting this done and getting the applications out and choosing before the school year begins, we are going to start this process today and work pretty briskly through it. That's on to you.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, board members and Mr. Bierman. Today, we're here, as Ms. Gittin said, to conduct a pre-briefing of the proposed updates to Board Policy 1.20, Community Involvement Opportunities. And that is also found in your accompanying backup materials that were provided to you ahead of time. So as you know, the board has requested that-
So as you know, the board has requested that the superintendent bring forward a recommendation regarding criteria for membership on three of your board advisory committees relative to construction, curriculum, and finance. And so we have had extensive conversation with our chiefs and our staff, as well as the superintendent. And we are bringing forward a recommendation that we have a balance of parents, community members, and experts in the field. And you have those provisions outlined for you in the backup materials. Also, in light of the recent conversations, we have added some language relative to videotaping, so that that will be available to the public for all of board advisories. And so I'm here today to receive your feedback on this initial pre-briefing. Keeping in mind, we will have a briefing in two weeks. And then, in accordance with statute, we will go ahead and have a public hearing as well as action from the board at the subsequent meeting. And I believe that meeting will be July 25th. So I'm here today for feedback, questions, and to entertain any discussion.
Anyone have comments?
I had just seen on the one where it says that the meetings will be recorded. Should that say video?
It does say video.
I'm reading it right here. It says the meetings to be recorded are listed below.
On line 72.
1.2.
72 says.
There's some clarification around videotaping.
Line 72. I'm looking at advisory committee recordings is what I was looking at.
Okay, on the one that's the 1.20? And go.
Policy changes.
In the policy.
It's the first box.
If you look on line 71.
I got it. And then line 72.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Well, the comment that I sent to you via email is, this doesn't really get at what I was hoping to achieve here with the level of expertise requiring board members to find a certain number of professionals for each. And I think I sent you the example, was it Plum Beach County? For the construction advisory committee that listed, like, two architects, two construction managers, two electricians, two whatever. And to me, this doesn't really change anything from what we had before.
Okay. Ms. Fisher, then Ms. Vaughn.
Okay, so I, so I read the changes, both in the finance and the construction, the curriculum, that did specifically say, following fields of employment or certification are represented, certified public accountant, financial municipal advisor, chief executive officer, professionals in insurance banking, okay, et cetera. So, and I, my feedback to Dr. Carlin was that even though we were going to encourage people with expertise, that we should still have a balance for, of all of our stakeholders, regardless of what the committee is. So I, I felt like this language captured that. And, you know, I was ready to support these changes. Because I think there were some specific requirements along with the balance of parents, community members to be evident in each one of the committees.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. I'm sorry, were you done?
My other question was that I know that there were some comments by some members of some of the committees that they did not wish to be videotaped. So how are we addressing that issue?
So that was a recommendation, I believe, that Ms. McClung referred to in the prior workshop approximately two weeks ago, where she mentioned CSI had brought that forward, and.
Well, let me just respond to that. On March the 12th, we had a vote, and it did pass, that we, as a, as a body, had decided we would videotape. And so it becomes, in my opinion, and I'll listen to everyone else, that it is the board's requirement, and anyone that wants to or does not want to participate, it's their, their decision. Ms. Vaughn, you are next.
Yeah, I'll say two things. The first thing is I agree with Ms. Fisher. I like the wording on here. And I think we do need to make it clear that although we're seeking some individuals of specific talents, let's say, that this is open to all of our citizens. And I think what Ms. Patrica brought up is way too prescriptive to have two architects and two. I mean, that's, that's, what if we had three architects or no architects? I mean, we, we're still, there's, there's a variety of people here that have specific talents that we're looking for. And the second thing is, going back to what Ms. Gittens just, just said, this was voted very recently by the board that it would be videotaped. And I know, I don't think that I gave a board member comment about my committee, which was curriculum. And we did discuss it, and nobody there had, had a problem with it. As a matter of fact, they thought that it was a good idea to have it out into the public, and not only for the sake of the general public, but as much for the sake of members of the committee who might miss a meeting, and also for all of us as a board to very easily be able to see, well, what are the other committees discussing? And, and so they thought that it was actually a very good idea.
Thank you. Excuse me, Ms. Giovinelli caught me in the middle.
And we talked about just notifying in the application that that information is for the applicants, and they'll be aware that they will, when they sign up for that, that they'll be videoed. So I don't think that that's, you know, a big issue. I also, I'm, I'm very supportive of this. I think you, we have to have all walks of life in these committees, and I don't think that we need to dictate who that is and what their credentials are. Because that was an issue a few months back, when they didn't even know what the credentials were, and they, they were made fun of, and they were, they had, they were very qualified to be on the construction advisory committee. So, I mean, I think it needs to be a well-rounded group and a very diverse group throughout the district. Just, that's my opinion.
Ms. Jordan, you didn't, do you have any other comments?
No, I definitely think that we need to make sure that everybody is aware of it when they're resigning up for that, that there's something that they're signing off, so there's no, you know, surprise to them, especially the ones who are already seated there. And then the new ones, of course, that will be appointed. But then again, when I'm looking at some of these committees, you can, you can have a lot of, just because you don't have a finance background, you can work in an industry where you still have that ability to learn those, the financing, like food service, for instance. You can run a restaurant, you could own a restaurant. Not necessarily are you a part of, or even banking. There's so many opportunities where you can learn those trades but not have the certificate for that. But you're still qualified because you have that information in that background.
Okay. And.
Thank you. Then my only other comment was that in our strategic plan, the one area that we do need some help in is the parent and community involvement. So we are, you know, asking for volunteers. And it's been my experience that our attendance at the advisory board meetings wanes as the year goes on. So if we're having difficulty now keeping members active and involved and coming to the meetings, I, I think that we want to make sure that when we advertise, it is, you know, we appreciate your willingness to volunteer, and we welcome you. Not, you know, you can only come if, if this, this, and this is so. So I like the wording, the changes that are now. And I think that if we advertise upfront that the meetings will be videotaped, that's all right.
And just a point of clarification, if I could, just in response, any changes that we make to the board policy, we will make sure are notated in the application. I just want to assure you on that as well.
Ms. Patrica?
I just, I mean, if we're gonna go in this direction, and it's going to be very general and not prescriptive, I don't see the need for a policy change, to be honest with you. I think that we're gonna go through a public notice period, and we're going to require the ladies to change the application process for absolutely, for really for no reason. I mean, we should all have in mind, when we're appointing people, that they should have expertise in these areas. And I do think that the lack of expertise in these, on these three specific committees does lead to some of the turnover. So using the first two or three meetings of finance advisory every year to explain the difference between a capital budget and a operating budget frustrates people who have a high degree of expertise in these areas. And I think that we could have a more prescriptive list that, that accommodates exactly what you're talking about, and have a couple of alternates, two to four alternates that don't necessarily fit one of the qualifications. But I'm not hearing at this table a desire to do that. So my question then becomes, what's the point in even changing the policy if we're not, if this is, this is really just a suggestion, every effort shall be made? That's really just a suggestion.
Well, two things, though. We do have the video piece in there that needs to be a part of policy. Because we have to put that in the application. And then, looking down the road, if we have other people joining this board in the future, they'll end up going through the same thing if it's not specific. And then it's up to them to want to change it. Ms. Fisher?
So, so I think that the addition of some of the specific skill sets is a good thing. And, and then I have another question. When we do the advertising, are we still gonna be saying, please give us your first, second, third, fourth choice? Because then that, that would make a difference also, I think, in the number of people that we would get on the committees if they don't get their first choice. But this would be more of, of an announcement to them that this is really what we're looking for on this committee. So I, I believe that the, the change is good and that the language is helpful.
Yeah, any, any, just a point of clarification, and to answer your question, we will, we operate at the pleasure of the board. So if it is still the indication that you'd like to have multiple choices available to applicants, we want to make sure that that is honored. So you give us direction, and we'll make sure that happens.
Can I suggest, then, when you, at the next briefing, that you bring a draft of the application with the new information in there? And then we can go from there. And I'm sorry, Ms. Giovinelli, you had a statement.
So, and I do have a question. So it's my understanding that the chairman meets with the superintendent in the school board chairman? Chair?
And I'm glad you brought that up. Can I, can I just add something here? We had also talked about that this pre-briefing and the briefing is to talk about the policy. The process is another arm of it. And I do, we are working on the process document as to who meets with whom and when. And I will get that to you all in the next day, or so by tomorrow, let's say. And that can be a part of another workshop discussion, that we will just bring it up after you've received it, or you can send comments to Dr. Carlin. But we are working on, this is the, the process that we would use. And we can discuss that at a later point. So that's kind of the process, and this is basically on the policy.
Okay. I was just curious about it. Also, there, if you look at lines 120 through 128, there is some mention of process there.
Right.
Okay, that's.
You might want to refer to that and providing feedback to me.
And we'll concretize that. So I'll send you the document, and then we'll go on. Yes, ma'am.
Does the process piece touch on potential changes? District advisory, for example, I've heard the same frustration since I joined when I was on EDAC with you, that all they do is receive information, and they don't actually make any recommendations to the district. So changing how we do DAC. And does it also include, we used to have our committee chairs report to us orally, and we haven't had that done in a while. And I know that, at least my committee chair is disappointed at the lack of opportunity to be able to come in front of the board, and I kind of liked hearing from them.
And I, I didn't know what happened with that. Because, I mean, I used to do it. It was terrifying, but good. So I don't know what happened before I got on the board that changed as well.
And I would agree with Ms. Patrica on that, because it's, there, these are our advisory committees, and they should be advising us. So I think that, that connection is really important.
And the process document will help with that as well.
And just to address that, I know that we, typically, we were having them report to the board quarterly. And then at some point, I think the board made a decision to have them report twice a year and provide a report on the, the other quarter. Yeah, I don't think there's any issue with us going back to a quarterly report. And typically, what we would do is you and I would meet with them. They give us their preliminary report, and then we schedule time for them to come before the board and put that on the calendar. So Susan, I don't know if that's my, my recollection of that is accurate. But I think we could.
Can we revise that?
But we can, we'd be more than happy to go back to quarterly reports. I know that they have to file one quarterly. That, that has not changed. The only change was that they come to the board every other quarter instead of every quarter. So we go back to just doing it every quarter.
I guess it just feels like it's been forever. I don't, I don't object to twice a year. Like, that's not what I was saying. I just feel like I haven't seen them here in a really long time, and that just might be my perception.
They've been here since we've been here.
Oh, they have been here.
I believe they came in the third quarter.
Then we're, then we're good. That's just my perception.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I?
Yes.
Add one thing, when, when you're talking about that, I think maybe the advisory boards need better direction, and maybe all of us as, as school board members and the staff liaisons, on how we actually do bring forward board, the advisory committee recommendations. Because that was a frustration on curriculum. And I know some, apparently some boards do better on that than others. And, and yes, I've heard the comment, we get too much information and not enough time to,
Actually do that.
to actually work on that information and do something constructive with it and make our recommendations. So I think it would behoove us as a board to, to really revisit the, the premise of having citizens advisory boards, which is, we want them to bring forth their ideas and suggestions. You know, I mean, it has to be reasonable. It's not like CSI is gonna say, let's build a rocket, descend to the moon, explore. I mean, you know, something reasonable and something that goes along with what we're looking for, for the envision.
Well, in, in the process document, we can talk about those definitions.
Right, right.
And present that and take everybody's feedback.
Yeah, what I meant was, as you're discussing it.
Oh, definitely.
It's broad. That's something, how to get us back to the, what I'm assuming was the original intent for these citizen advisory boards, which is to allow our citizens that have specific skills and talents to bring, bring their ideas forth to us.
Okay. All right. Any other things? Because we are at five minutes before we need to leave, and I need to know, is there anything? Go ahead.
Just, and maybe this is when we bring the process document back. But, you know, I did get verification from Janet, it is two verbals, two reports. If we have consensus, then we can go back and, and do four quarterly.
Maybe just, okay. So can we agree to talk about it? And look at whatever and put it on our process document?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, we, so I guess we've covered everything we need to cover. We've got about a minute apiece to talk about.
What about item eight?
That, we kind of covered the quarterly reports, didn't?
Separate.
Oh, okay.
Issues there. For a construction advisory committee, my question is, what was the discussion surrounding the IAQ process? The, the minutes on that meeting were not really clear. I wasn't sure what happened there. And this is where an oral report might be helpful, because I could ask that question. And then, in CSI, and I think twice in EDAC, we had recommendations coming out of those committees. Where do we stand on those? I know that we have a recommendation process. Do you know where we are in those processes? Do we, as a board, need to discuss those recommendations first? And then say, do you pursue them? What do we do now?
So we do maintain a document in my office. I am appointed by Dr. Atkins to maintain that. So the process basically works like this. A board advisory makes a recommendation, and it is voted on and recorded in the minutes. From there, it does come to my office. It used to be Mrs. Bishop, now it's Mrs. Thomas. We'll go ahead and record that into a document, an Excel spreadsheet, essentially. We turn that over to a particular chief, or the superintendent, or the board, depending on the nature of the recommendation. If it has an HR flair, we'll bring it to HR to be able to respond. Sometimes the recommendation is something we're already doing, so we do get that back. We will. We will record the outcome in the spreadsheet, and then that is to be posted on the website. So, we will make sure with the transition from Miss Bishop to Miss Thomas, that that is, that we go ahead and post that on the website, because I want to double-check that, but that is the process for that to occur. If it is something that is not going to be moved forward as an idea, then we will include the rationale for that.
Okay.
And some of the stuff for EDAC, though, if I may? The, a lot of the recommendations for that are already being done.
Okay.
This is stuff that they've been working on for a whole year.
Okay.
As part of their monthly work. So, when we, when we looked at that, we looked and we seen that this has already been fulfilled, or it's already done.
And so, we note that on the spreadsheet. We'll say, sent to Dr. Pruitt, it came back to us as being completed.
All right, the, the final thing I have is, my, my committee chair for finance advisory specifically asked me to read aloud two paragraphs in his report. The first is about a reconsideration of videotaping advisory committee meetings. I'm not going to read that one aloud, I think that's a dead issue. But the other paragraph he wanted me to read is, "As chairman, I wish to thank Dr. Atkins for taking time away from his busy schedule to meet with the finance advisory committee on two occasions, and providing the committee with status updates regarding the Gibson Report and other directives of the district. I appreciated his candor and honesty in addressing all questions of the committee." Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jordan, now you've got 30 seconds, no, take a minute.
Oh, no, I have nothing.
You have nothing further? Ms. Vaughn?
What I wanted to say is going to take a lot longer than a minute, so I'm going to wait till Tuesday.
Thank you. And Ms. Giavanelle?
I can't, I mean, I'm not going to say anything either, because I have to leave.
Yeah, okay, I'm missing a retirement party, but that's okay.
I have.
Ms. Patrick? Okay? Nothing?
Nothing today.
It's because I said I'm going to a party, that you don't have anything. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Bearman?
No, I don't have anything.
Nothing?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, all hearts clear, thank you so much, everyone. We will see you Tuesday. We do not have a briefing, we will see you at 6 o'clock.
What is tomorrow at 1:00?
It's our. Just biased, but it's called something else, too. Building Inclusive Teams Training, 1:00 to 4:00 tomorrow. It is at the Foundation Office. So, make sure you guys are aware of that, it's not here. It's at the Foundation, so we will see you 1:00 tomorrow. Thank you, staff and everyone.